Hello, my name's John Donches. And I just wanted to show you on the Amayus Borough site where they're recording their borough meetings. I do too. I take my own camera and record the things and put them up on a website, Epcat.us, where you can view these things anytime you want. I also try to do as many committee meetings from the Amayus Borough as I can. Last Monday, they just had a borough meeting. A whole bunch of the firemen, all of them were there, to recommend that they put more money back into their budget line item that they cut. They cut like $100,000. As it turns out, they put some money back, but interesting thing is their video webcasting is different than mine, and I'll show you how this is. Right now, I just have my regular homepage that comes up. And I'm gonna go to the borough site, click on their webcast, and play that and record the whole thing for you. And you'll see how it's different than what the real meeting was like. There's the borough website. You go to webcast, hit it.
Your policies run out in certain areas. So it's a fact, it's been happening.
And there it is.
This infrastructure is very important. That is in, okay? I just don't see any reason for the removal from the streets. You guys have been paying me since 1992 for these boxes. I never increased it. I pay the electric bill for it. I pay for when the power goes down for my generators. And I have no intentions to ever increase it because I feel that's how important it is to our community when everything goes down. And of course, it has been going down. And guess what? It's gonna go down again, our power. There's gonna be problems. We were told that for the weather. We're gonna have blackouts with power. We're gonna have a lot of storm-related things. It's gonna happen, it's just a matter of when. As far as the fire department, the cuts, and I understand, you just got budget situations. There is no doubt, there's very hard decisions. However, you mentioned that I didn't know a call just about the other areas that have these fire departments. I said, "Look, Amayus was always a role, we all looked upon Amayus or how they did things, especially a fire department." And everybody around the county, if they were here, they would have the fire chiefs, the older ones and everything, they followed what Amayus did because they come up with some great things. And they did. 1995, that program that they started, hey, I'm in the poor, I know what it costs. All right? This isn't a fraction of the cost what you would have to pay for a real full-time fire department. I looked at some of your numbers over the previous years. My God, 2% increase for like a 10-year period? For what you've been operating, how you've been operating. That's incredible. I don't think, are they knocking your doors down for more money to fire it? I don't know. Is that the case? All comes down to this. If it works, don't fix it. You have the most professional police department, fire department, Public Works. These are very blessed. And to cut this funding is just absolutely, positively the wrong thing to do.
Mr. Brown?
Mr., I wanted just to, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam President, but we decided to continue the fire department dispatching service.
No, that's not the problem. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But you brought it up, and I just wanna make sure that the people know, the only service that we discontinued with the dispatching service is the Public Works because of some inconsistencies that were happening. And so that we felt that it was for the Public Works that they, to have a cellphone. And our answering service, our telephones here are adequate enough that they could handle...
No, I didn't even know that, so...
Yeah, so anyway, I just wanna make sure that the people know, the fire department still has dispatching service.
Okay, well, I didn't even know that was cut, but that, you know, anyway, that's another subject. Anyway, but the Gable system is a good system. It's well-maintained and keep on going. I just hope you reconsider that because selling it for a hundred bucks on eBay is not the answer. I mean, if I was in your shoes and I made the decision, not wanting to cut that, and when we go through these times and we know it's gonna happen, I couldn't lay home and sleep and knowing that that's not available, part of a way to report an emergency or get some help. And same with the fire department. I know that, because where our antennas and the Gable system, I'm susceptible to the electric storms hitting us, and we got hit already. And knowing that our fire department is there to respond right away. So I just, I just hope that you can work together with the fire department, figure something out. And I appreciate your time, and I understand budgets are, like I said before, but I just, please reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Do you have any questions for me? I'm sorry. Thank you.
My name's Jason Custer. I live at 958 Little Lehigh Drive in the borough. I'm here for two reasons. Let me just write this down quick. All right. First thing, I guess it would be for Public Works. In the street that I live on, Little Lehigh, it's, for lack of better words, it's like a race highway now. There have been some signs that were recently put up pointing to Little Lehigh Drive as a thorough through to get to 29. That's fine, if that's what you guys need. I would like the borough to consider to put a speed hump in. They work in Allentown. The Eastsiders, a couple of them. The high schoolers, they're doing 50 miles an hour in the morning. And it's not a straight road, I understand it. Everybody speeds everywhere, you know, but at least on other roads, you can see them coming. On my road, you can't. I go out to get my newspaper, zing, there they go. And there's nothing to stop them. So I'm not looking for a four-way stop, I just think a speed hump versus a speed bump. I mean, you know, or, yeah, it gets a speed bump. It's a bigger one, you can still do 25 miles an hour over it, it doesn't disrupt traffic. But if the borough decided to put these signs up telling people to go off the normal streets in Amayus and come through what's supposed to be a small neighborhood to get to a highway, I would just think that maybe a speed hump would be something to consider. As far as the fire department, I'm also a lieutenant downtown fire department as a resident out, or as a resident in Amayus. I think the men do, men and possibly women, there's some women, do a great job. And you get them at a really discounted rate. Take the city of Easton. There are only 26,000 residents there, okay? Amayus is 40% of that. They have approximately 55 career firefighters there. You take 40% of that, Amayus should have 20 career firefighters, okay? Much bigger cost than what you're getting these guys for. They're doing a great job. I think it's horrible that you're gonna cut any money from them considering you get them at such a good discount. If it was up to me, I'd say get career guys, get more people in there, because you show up with three guys, it's not easy to go put a fire out with three guys. You're going in with two, there's nobody out there to protect you, to watch your back. You don't know when the next crew's coming. Anything can happen. We're gonna see, Allentown, we just went from 30 guys a shift to 25 guys a shift, and sometimes we don't have guys backing us up. So I'd just like you reconsider your bunch of cuts.
Giovanni Landy, 869 Frank Drive. I already signed in.
Thank you.
I'm here this evening this for the firefighters. I'm also here to speak about the proposed budget for 2013. I was very disappointed to hear what the final numbers mean for the residents of the borough. Once again, it appears council has put their own wishes ahead of those of the residents, this time willing to jeopardize public safety. The idea that council will put funds in the form of labor in the budget for baseball field improvements while cutting funds for fire departments is ridiculous. Mr. Barrett and Mr. Brown appeared before the Lehigh County Commissioners to appeal for $70,000 of additional funding council is earmarked for ball field improvements. This money, if received, could be used to backfill the budget for maintenance in the parks that would be performed out of the general fund. This money, if it is received and frees up that budget money, could be used to backfill money for the fire department.
What money? What money are you talking about that we're gonna get?
The Green Futures Fund that Mr. Barrett and Mr. Brown, I know it was tabled, but I'm speaking specifically to their request. And point of order, I before let now, point of order, point of order. While there's no tax increase for next year's budget, which to some of us comes as no surprise since we're heading into an election year, council has still found a way to raise revenues. At this time, it's by increasing fees. For example, adding $6 to the trash collection fees, which coincidentally, we are still overcharged for. To find compost, to fund compost sites even though the compost site is funded from the general fund. This would be like doing a home budget and listing part of your cable bill fees under your electric bill. Not only does it create confusion, but when it comes to time to tighten your belt, you wouldn't understand the full impact of your cable bill or how to effectively reduce your expenses. Another example is an increase in water meter fees and charges of fees to apartments that don't even have water meters. Our services are not revenue generators for you. The cost of a service should reflect the cost to provide that service and nothing else. I have heard many times from council members that we have the lowest water rates in the area. It's said as if it justifies increasing rates when not necessary, or as if having lower water rates is a bad thing. We should be proud of this. The goal of the borough should be to provide all of its services at the lowest cost possible for the taxpayers. This isn't a for-profit business. It's a public service. My water meter is not a revenue generator for the borough. The fees should pay for my meter and nothing else. It should be easy to determine. You take the cost of the meter, the cost to install it, divide it by the life expectancy of the meter, it's not rocket science. I don't know why we have difficulty doing these things. If the fees for all services were calculated this way, it would be easier to determine what they cost, how we can reduce these costs, or if they aren't cost-effective, maybe the taxpayers can decide which services they want to keep and which services they want to remove. I saw in the budget, it appears that we're looking to carry over $500,000 as fund balance to next year. Maybe it's possible to look at reducing that fund balance to make sure that we have our public safety.
So you want us to spend more this year so we don't have a carryover? That's the only way you could reduce the cash carryover is to spend more before the end of the year. Is that your choice? Spend more money now on things we don't need so we don't have a cash carryover?
Uh, no, you could reduce the budget item for cash carryover and then slide that money into the fire department where you reduce their...
For this, for this year?
No, for next year, for the 2013 budget I'm speaking of.
Makes no sense at all. You don't even know what you're talking about. You make no sense. You have no idea what you're just saying.
The budget for next year?
It's a budgeted cash carryover, $500,000. It means at the end of this year, we'll have $500,000 for which we didn't spend.
Correct.
Which we'll put into next year's operating budget. So you want us to reduce that number and have less to spend next year?
It's a fund balance item 340.120.
Sure, I know where it is.
Okay? So what I'm recommending to you is that you look at reducing some of the carryover you plan on having.
You don't, I don't think you understand what a carryover is. It's the extra money. At the end of, at the end of today, I've got $20 in my wallet. I can use that $20 tomorrow. I can't reduce the $20 in my wallet and still have it tomorrow. It's not possible. You can't, I can't reduce what I have in my wallet right now and have more money tomorrow.
I understand what you're saying, and maybe I've misworded the statement, okay? But last year, we were planning on a carryover of $300,000, and we ended up carrying over $560,000.
Correct, yes, last year, fortunate.
So I understand that the carryover's not always exact. I'm hoping that you guys will find a way to do this that involves keeping the services in place and not eliminating the fire service.
That's understandable. Thank you for that comment.
Madam President?
Mr. Brown?
Just a quick question for you, Mr. Landy. So if we, if we pay, you're saying to pay for the services at a minimum cost, at today's rates, those costs would be through the roof. So are you okay with us doing that?
I don't understand what...
You're saying, you were just saying that you should pay for the services to get, that you can get at a minimum cost.
Correct.
Right? So for infrastructure such as water, our water system needs to be upgraded.
Correct.
So are you willing then to pay $5 a gallon, uh, $5 per thousand dollars, or $5 per thousand gallons for water to make sure that your water and your water towers are operating efficiently and operating correctly?
Um, I'm willing to pay what it takes to pay for a service like water.
Okay, so $5 is okay. Is $10 okay?
I don't know, were we gonna throw hypotheticals around?
No, but you're saying to give that creep, what we have done is to take what we have maintained, what we have, and try to, for the past years, to continue the great services that we do have. It's a very difficult decision to make. Nobody wants to cut services. Nobody wants to do that. But we have continued with what we have and maintained those services, and I think they're pretty good. I enjoy them. But it's just a matter of how far do you wanna go? I mean, if you're really talking that way, then we need to, then the numbers will go right through the roof. I mean, they're always, the department heads are always coming to us. It's, so anyway, that's...
You know, alls I can tell you is services cost what services cost. I asked that maybe you adjust your budget so that you can easily identify costs of services. You don't slide $6 onto a trash fee to pay for compost that's also paid for from the general fund when you're...
The trash is, the trash goes into the general fund, so it's a revenue that comes out and expense that goes out. There are line items, that's what we have in our budget that justifies what we bring in and what we put out. So I think it's pretty clear in what we pay. Now, the water fund's a different story because the water fund is separate than the general fund. So what you pay for your water is what we invest in providing you with water. There's no, there's nothing in between there, that's...
I know, aside from borrowing from the water fund, the maintenance money for, for tower repairs, but I'm just saying, if you're gonna bill me...
The tower belongs to the water department.
If you're gonna bill me for a service like trash collection, and at the end of the year, the bill for trash collection was less than the total you billed the borough, you're running a surplus in that department.
Sure.
It goes on year after year after year.
We have to pay employees to manage the trash, to manage the billing, and to deal with the issues that come up with the trash. And I understand your point in that, and it's well taken.
It should be a line item, correct?
It's well taken.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, you mentioned that we have created a budget as of today that is revenue neutral, to zero, zero taxing. In order to fund, if I understand correctly, in order to fund, to put the money back to the fire department, the only way I see to do that right now is to increase taxes. So I ask you as just a typical homeowner, what, how much more are you willing to pay in taxes to put this money back to the fire department? Well, how much is too much? Try to find out what that threshold is per year that you would think is too much to put back in for us as residents to pay us taxes.
Um, I couldn't tell you honestly, I didn't do an in-depth analysis of the budget to give you an answer like that. I, you know, I believe that you could do it and still be revenue neutral.
You can't, you can't. It's impossible. To put the money back, and then it was removed from their budget, we have to raise taxes. So I'm just, I'm just asking a question, and I really, it's, is it $25 too much? Is $50 too much? Is $10 too much? I don't know.
I understand your question. I understand that you're looking at me the way you're looking at me. Maybe you can understand my frustration because I can see when I do budget analysis and I see that every other year, the borough coinciding with an election, there's no tax increase. That to me ends up looking suspicious. So you can, you know, maybe see my side of the situation where I think maybe...
Mr. Lavenberg?
So many things that I wanna address, but I won't.
We're way over five minutes, and we, this is a usual suspect...
Actually, he just hit his five.
Okay, it's a usual suspect. Do we really need to address this? I mean, we're going nowhere. You don't care.
I wanna address it because there are a lot of people here that are getting misinformation, and I think it needs to be put out there so that they know.
Every sentence that he said had misinformation.
Correct. You guys are starting to fight amongst yourselves. Is there a motion to extend Mr. Landy's time? Motion by Mr. Lavenberg, is there a second?
Only because I wanna ask questions.
Second by Mr. Holtzaver. Discussion. All those in favor? We have two ayes. Those opposed? Holtzaver, Barrett, Gilbert, Waddell, and Shupsta are opposed, his five minutes are...
Am I allowed to make corrections?
You got two minutes.
He doesn't get to respond.
He cannot respond. You have two minutes.
All right. First of all, the compost set, the compost center runs a deficit every year. Did you know that? It costs more to run than we bring in.
He can't respond.
Okay, I'm saying a hypothetical. All right. Do you know that our Public Works Director, or Public Works Department picks up Christmas trees from the curb every year? That's part of the compost system. Do you know that our Public Works Department goes and picks up bags of, the brown bags with the...
Yard waste.
Yard waste in? That goes to the compost center. These are all services that they provide at a deficit because it is not funded, all right? That $6 fee contributes towards that. We still run a deficit. All right, that's the first thing. The water issue. The rates that we're increasing those, and trust me, it's just as hard to vote for a rate increase in water as it is for taxes. So what you're saying about election years, bunch of bunk, all right? Also, raising sewer rates is just as hard. I pay those rates too. I have kids that take 20-minute showers. You think I'm happy about water rates going up? I'm not, all right? And I have three kids, by the way, so time's at. It's to pay for infrastructure. We have been not addressing water mains the way we should. The government regulations are unbelievable that our Public Works has to follow, not only for Public Works, for water, but also for sewer. And we can raise taxes. But if we raise taxes, how many people will be ticked off because we raised taxes? Because they would say, oh, our cable rates go up every year, our insurance goes up every year, our oil bill goes up a year. We're getting nickel and dimed everywhere. And now we don't raise taxes, and now we're getting hammered because we don't raise taxes? We get hammered if we don't raise taxes, we get hammered if we raise taxes. So it is a tough job to be a peer, and I, you know, I'm up for reelection. If anyone wants to run against me, fine. I don't care. Put the best people up here, and then they debate and they make decisions. I've been doing that for 16 years. I voted to decrease taxes over my times on council, all right? You have to go by what the economy can handle. And people can't handle a tax increase right now. People are hurting, including myself. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you. Anyone else with a personal appeal?
I am Captain Matt Holm with the Amayus Fire Department. I live at 328 South 16th Street. Lots of different things I kinda wanna address. Mr. Waddell, you asked the question, what would that gentleman be willing to pay to keep the fire department running? Can you tell me what would cost to keep the fire department running? What that cost would be to that resident?
I think we had to know over here, like 100, 200, 300, 400, 50,000. I was looking that out today, just we had an idea on that.
Okay, 'cause I think that would be the better question as opposed to him. Would you be willing to pay this amount? Not just say, how much? Compost Center, you know, we talked about the compost center and a compost center running at a deficit. We took on Lehigh County equipment. You know, who funds the repairs for that equipment? I thought we were in an agreement with Lower McCungy Township, so that cost should be deferred between the two.
They pay for all the insurance. And they have a total.
Okay, well, from my understanding is the, the cost of repairs to the equipment has been significantly higher than the insurance on that, and the borough of Amayus residents are eating that cost. Am I incorrect in that?
I don't have their insurance information.
And I don't have the numbers with me either. You know, Mr. Holtzaver, you made the statement that, that you didn't understand the structure of the Amayus Fire Department and how we were paid.
Yes, sir.
And I actually think that's an understatement. You are so far away from understanding us, which one says surprises me as a resident and as a firefighter. It surprises me that the borough council does not understand their fire department that they've been budgeting for, for years.
No, I was naive in believing that a volunteer meant you were unpaid. So I did spend two hours with Chief Rice, former Chief Rice, and Tori, two hours to try and understand as much as possible before imposing any cuts. I thought volunteer meant unpaid. I didn't realize you could be a volunteer firefighter and still be paid, and that was my mistake.
Correct. And the reason I think that blows me away is, is Mr. Brown, you spent so much time with us at the station getting to understand us, but yet council still didn't understand how we worked, so, you know, maybe those were the questions you should have been asking. On another note, Mr. Lavenberg, I love the, the fact that we taped the council meetings, the fact that we tape public safety meetings. I think all the meetings the borough does should be taped so that we can review them. You made the statement in a recent public safety meeting that as a volunteer soccer coach, you do not get paid.
No, and you didn't. I don't know where you got that from, because that's not what I said.
I believe I watched it on YouTube, the videocast of the November 29th Public Safety Committee.
Basketball, why would I say what you just said?
Okay, well...
And that...
Either way, either way, I understand where you're coming from.
No, you're taking a lot of context. Wait, if he's gonna say something, you better put it in context.
Can I, can I have a minute to finish?
Yes.
Okay. While I understand that is the case, basketball, soccer, whatever you wanna call it, the Amayus firefighters being volunteer, paid-on-call guys, when the pager goes off at 3:00 in the morning, they get up and come out. If they do not ride the apparatus, they do not get paid. They're a volunteer, okay? They all have full-time jobs. So when it's 3:00 in the morning and they try to go back home and maybe catch an hour of sleep before they get up for work, they have to go to a full-time job. I don't see as being a coach, you get called at 3:00 in the morning and have to go through that. I am also a volunteer coach. I coach soccer, a matter of fact. I did not put nearly the amount of time into coaching soccer as I do training with the Amayus Fire Department, a lot of which is done on my own time, not paid, and money that comes out of my pocket for the training. So all I'm saying as a resident and as the fire department is you really need to reconsider the cuts to the department. One of the departments within the borough that has the lowest operating budget out of all of them, that has come in under budget every year for like 10 years, you've decided that that service wasn't important enough to the borough residents, that we should cut that. That just amazes me how you could think that. So if you have any questions, I'll take them. If not...
It's not a question, it's a correction because first of all, that safety committee meeting, if I'm not mistaken, that wasn't even recorded, correct?
Public Safety Committee.
It was the only one I've ever been at, so you couldn't have watched the tape. It wasn't even recorded. Second of all, you took it out of context. It was a discussion about one of our gentlemen that, from the fire department, was saying he volunteers to sell Christmas trees. It was, the whole issue was about fundraisers. It had nothing to do with volunteering. It had to do with, he couldn't get volunteers, and I said, "Well, I know what it's like because I am a coordinator for UIA basketball. I coached a boys' basketball team. Nobody wanted to coach the girls' team, so I ended up coaching two teams." So everything you just said had nothing to do with what I said. Nothing.
And we will have to disagree...
And that wasn't even recorded.
We will have to...
So you lied that you watched it.
We will have to disagree at this point.
That's enough, gentlemen.
We will have to disagree at this point, and if after today's meeting you would like, I will gladly show you the video on YouTube.
Just for the record, the fire department last year was $41,000 over budget, just so you know. It was over budget.
It was their executive session?
That was during executive session too.
No.
I, I watched.
We're not, no, we're not going to go there. We're not going there.
They were $41,000 over budget.
Anyone else?
Alright, Holsaver, 527 East Terrace Street, Amas. As you can see, I'm in the fire department, also safety officer. I was handed these two photos. We talked earlier about how fire grows, doubles every 30 seconds, four times every minute. I wonder if he's realized where this was. Can I pass them around?
Sure. First name? Just a guess. Yep.
That was the first out from getting there. Yep, always still unchecked. Now, can you imagine four or five minutes later after that? Once you see him, you might.
Is that first name?
No.
But, you might, I mean.
No.
No, it's not different right now. There's new grass, there's, it's not, there'd be no way to interpret what it says, could you tell us where it is?
Well, how about we let council see it, maybe they can guess.
Looks like a barn.
I'm serious. Being on the first out truck, you know, comes something like that. I ran out of water. When the first, the first out truck of volunteers came. Can you imagine seeing that?
Yeah.
I have to put up with that. Can you explain to homeowners?
One question, is this the Driesen Reif or Feldman?
No.
That's what I was referring to.
No, no, it wasn't.
Farmhouse Restaurant?
Yes, it was. Can you imagine four minutes later, the way fire expands and grows? That business was open that morning. Explain to homeowner, "Oh, well, you know, the guys had to come from work." Four minutes later, ask anyone here what experience, they could tell you. What would have happened? You have guys here from Allentown, they can explain it to you. Any questions?
No.
Right.
Anyone else?
John Dodges, 559 Minor Street. And one concern I had is the extra, the extra $6 charge being placed on refuse fees charged to each household. And I had a chart connected with this that shows, the first one, the actual cost to the borough for refuse collection and how much the borough is charging its taxpayers for the same service. And there's a difference between the two of between eight, on the average of eight to nine percent or more than the service actually costs. Over the last seven years, this has added up to more than $1.44 million, an average of $206,000 roughly a year of overcharge, as I recall it. And this makes me wonder why the council is now adding the extra $6 increase to help offset the composting costs. Seems the homeowners and tenants are paying way more than enough to cover the complete cost of the compost site already. Where is the extra money from this line item being spent, since council says it must charge yet more? The other chart shows how many households are being charged this new extra $6 compost charge. And if all rental households are charged a refuse fee, then there are 7,500 households, times six bucks, $45,000 more, on top of the $200,000 overcharge every year. That makes it just about a quarter million overcharge per year on the refuse bill. And 2,000 of those households are tenant occupied renters. Chances are, they don't even use the compost site. And then on that same theme, these same tenant households are also overcharged for their water usage compared to homeowners. There's an extra fee called a multi-unit service charge, six bucks a quarter, 32 bucks a year, on each one of those same 2,000 household rental units. That adds up to $64,000 a year more that the tenants or renters pay for their water compared to homeowners. One of the council members, Brian Holsaver, called this a phantom fee. I agree with this, but despite that, I still voted to keep these extra fees on the tenant households. The main point of my appeal is to state that this council has no problem passing phantom fees on both refuse and water bills, especially on tenants, to help them balance the budgets. Main purpose of the council is to make sure that the tax and fee burden is fairly assumed by all, and not overburden one specific segment, the tenant renter household, over the homeowner. One other way council can save money is by not trying to create frivolous ordinances that strip taxpayers of their First Amendment rights. Earlier this year, LeAnn Gilbert, single-handedly, had our solicitor create a new ordinance called the interim rule, which prevents video recording the pension board meetings. This cost the taxpayers about $1,000 to have drawn up by our solicitor back May 22nd of this year.
Mr. Dodges, that wasn't an ordinance. Just for the record, it was not an ordinance.
It's a fact, it doesn't matter.
I know.
I know it's not being enforced because I just video recorded the latest pension board meeting held 11/28/12. And I have, and you don't have to answer these right now, I can take that later. Was it ever voted on by council or even discussed in committee level? What are the next actions that will take place as to this interim rule? I'd hope that council president, LeAnn Gilbert, would pay back to the Amas budget the cost she had the borough incur for this frivolous undertaking. These are different ways that you could probably save money, and I'll be coming up for a second appeal, or I can say it now. I was unable to attend the last county, Lehigh County Commissioners meeting, however, I was able to see it on the internet. Topic of the Green Futures Fund came up, and I see that Amas council is once again asking for $70,000 to go totally towards the old stadium at Amas Community Park. I could only wish our council members were as interested in funding the capital improvement line item projects and repairs that were gutted from this year's budget coming up, 2/13. I'm glad to see that at least the county commissioners had a majority that voted to table this fund for practical reason that the county budget is already in deficit spending, and there's no money to waste on special interest wants. This council's already rated the cash savings in the water fund and unjustly raised fees for water and trash bills to make sure they don't raise taxes for 2/13. There's a lot of places you can do and change things so that you can fund things that are necessary. And just as a sideline, I have a friend that house caught fire a little while ago up Charm of the Hill, Albert Milford. House was totally gone in a half hour. The whole family was home, the mother was down in the basement. Luckily, it was, had one of these key locks that you had to get out from the inside versus just the lever. It was totally engulfed with the smoke and everything. She was lucky, they didn't even know she was down there at the time, but she found the key and was able to get out. So, if you have any of those old lock things for getting out of your house, change them. And thank you very much, firemen and police and everything here, we have a great...
Mr. Dodges, at one point you said six times four, $6 quarterly fee times four quarters equals 32, six times four is 24.
You're correct. I take that back.
Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Yes, I'm Charles Kaler.
Did you sign in, sir?
Sheet, right there in front of you.
Is it? Mr. Dodges, did you take the sign in sheet?
Hey. It was the... That happened before. Okay.
Could you state your name again, sir, please?
Charles Kaler.
Thank you.
I'm a resident. I've been here for 60...
And your address?
350 South 12th Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As I said, I'm a resident, I've been here for 65-plus years. I started working in this borough, I opened a business in this borough. I have never had the need to have the fire company come to my place of business. I am thankful for that. I do think what you're doing with the fire company is you're making mistakes. Now, I also work with the borough, for the borough, sorry. Back in the early 70s, I was working as a firefighter. I saw a few fires and I had to go to them, of course, and after that, with my job, I could no longer do it. I gave it up, and then back in, oh, about seven years ago, I came back as fire police. Now, I have been working as fire police, I see what these guys do, and until you actually have to seen a number of times and see what's saved and what isn't saved, I would more than be glad to see my taxes go up. I have not had an increase from the borough in, I guess, about three, four years. That hasn't happened. My social security hasn't gone up. Everything else has gone up, though, and I'm still be more than willing to see my taxes go up a bit. I'd find some way to pay it for the service. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a personal appeal?
My name's Kyle Walber, 329 South 2nd Street in the borough. I joined the department back in 2004 when I was a freshman in high school, so I've been there about nine years shortly after 2001 I joined. In that nine years, I've run 900, 1,000 fire calls while going to high school, while working a full-time job 40 hours a week, plus other jobs on the side, and I still manage a good time to do this. Instead of questioning, you know, how much money you would pay, you guys should be, you know, fortunate what kind of service you're getting as far as the price. Average fireman in the city of Allentown, I'm sure, makes $55,000 to $60,000 a year, plus benefits. You guys know how much benefits cost, if you work for any companies? We're doing the services, same exact thing as cities, for an average of $3,000 to $4,000 a year. $6 an hour is the average rate you can make, less than minimum wage, same service. You guys are lucky, you get it for a cheap rate, same exact service as a city, that's all I got.
Mr. Walber?
Sure.
Your average rate is $6.
Uh huh.
If I look at your pay rate, yours is going to be $12 to $14 in that range.
Okay.
How do you, how do you attribute that to $6? And I guess that's the part I don't understand.
When I work an eight-hour shift, such as on a weekend, 7:03 through 11:00, 11:07, four hours are paid, four hours are volunteer. So, I either make four hours at $12 an hour for 48, or eight hours at $6 an hour, $48.
So, you always make, you always work, are you, you're always scheduled for an eight-hour shift?
Negative.
Okay.
During the week, we have day crews, 7:00 to 12:00, 12:00 to 5:00, 5:00 to 11:00, 11:07.
And now, when you serve our residents, you personally, you work a day shift during the week and sometimes a weekend?
No, I have a full-time job.
Okay, so you only...
Most of the time, it's over three nights a week. Out of my personal time, I like serving the borough. On weekends, I'll usually work Sunday, 3:00 to 11:00.
Thank you.
The comment was made, you're not cutting services, you are cutting services to all these people.
So, during, well, during the week, then, if you work a five-hour shift, you get paid, you get paid for two and a half hours, or do you...
I believe so, yes.
Thank you, and thank you for your service, I appreciate it.
Mr. Walber, I'd like to ask you a question.
Sure.
When you're not at, at Central Station, and you're at home, and you respond to a call, what do you get paid when you respond?
Depends if I get on truck or not. If I sit at the station, don't get a truck, I don't get paid nothing.
Okay, but suppose you go to Central Station, you get on a truck, and you go to that fire scene, what do you get?
I believe it depends on how long the call is. If it's 15 minutes, it takes four 15-minute calls to make up an hour.
Do you know what your hourly rate would be at that point?
It all depends on your training. All our guys are firefighter one, you start at base salary of 925, I believe, as a modified firefighter, and every training, you go up a quarter. I believe it's no more than 1375 an hour, which...
Use some 14s.
14s?
Yeah.
Okay, so what's happened, that's $7?
Yeah, right, and I think, I think the low, the low person may be, I think they're in the 10 range.
Okay, and you're risking your life to want to burn a building?
No, no.
For $5 an hour?
Please don't say I'm discounting, I'm just trying to understand and be clear.
Okay.
I'm the budget person, so the clearer I am, the easier it is for me.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a personal appeal? No? One?
I'm short, so, excuse me. Good evening.
Your name?
Sally Loyles, I live at 609 Chestnut Street, I'm an owner there. I lived through a very bad fire in Allentown. If it weren't for the firefighters responding there as quickly as they did, they didn't come from home, they came from the firehouse. They were on my roof, watering down my house, watering down the church next to a five-story factory that was totally engulfed. Just want you to know that, that we need them, we need them 24/7. They only, they don't only fight fires. If you see news on the weekend, they were one of the first people in Newtown School, in the school. It wasn't a good site. They have to also do things like that, you don't realize that. They're here for our schools. I just want you to ponder this. If you have a train derailment or Turkey Hill on fire, if they're not there, maybe responding from home, you're going to have a complete disaster. I mean, we need them 24 hours, seven days a week, and I'm proud of them, and I feel you should all, every one of you, debate wise. Thank you.
Anyone else with a personal appeal? Hearing none? Can move back to our agenda? Alright. Community minutes. Any member of council have an item they wish to bring forward for community minutes? Dr. Waddell?
One thing I'd like to say is, I was at the Amas Historical Society over the weekend, I'm going to have a little genealogical work done, and if you haven't been to the Amas Historical Society in a while, what a great time to go. They have really nice displays of Amas memorabilia from the holiday season, they have, there's dresses, there's train sets. It's, it's just really nice, and I would hope all of you would get in. It's Saturday, what, Saturday 12 to 4, correct? Get over and see, and they have food there too. There's cookies, there's chocolates, and, believe me, stop by and take a look at it, they do a great job, and everybody should be a member of it, so, thank you for all you're doing for us, Pat.
Thank you. We will close this coming Saturday.
Oh, thank you.
Back in again on the Monday night, and we also are open on Wednesday evening, and we have a lot of dress to take.
Good. Thank you for all you do, Pat.
Thank you for that, Dr. Waddell. Special presentations, we have nothing this evening, which brings us to the reading of the December 3rd minutes. Is there a motion to dispense with the formal reading of the minutes? Motion by Mr. Lavenberg, second by Dr. Waddell. All those in favor? We have seven ayes. Additions or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the minutes as drafted? Motion by Mr. Barrett, is our second. Second by Mr. Lavenberg, discussion. All those in favor? We have seven ayes. Decision on bids? Mr. Pepe, we have no bids this evening? Communications? First letter in our binder comes from Don Nickerson of West Wood Street in Amas. He is interested in volunteering to a board or commission as needed. He doesn't really specify anything, but I believe staff contacted Mr. Nickerson?
That's correct.
He's interested in civil service and...
Zoning.
Zoning, okay.
What committee has that gone to?
Well, civil service will go to public safety and zoning will go to gen ad. So, we'll have to discuss it. Alright. John Royer of Henry Drive has submitted an application to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council. I will refer this to you, Mr. Schubsta, Health Sanitation and Conservation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bradley Goust of Panel for Engineering is requesting that sewer enforcement officers be appointed for 2013. I will refer that to Dr. Waddell and the General Administration Committee. I will refer that to Dr. Waddell and the General Administration Committee. Terry Surong-McMenamin has sent us a letter dealing with the Winter Snow Blast Festival, which is scheduled for Friday, February 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. She submitted a event form along with a cover letter. I will be referring this to the Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Barrett.
What actually needs to be approved that is on here that-
The use of the triangle. We always refer that to committee as well as CD sale or the ice bar.
Oh, the ice bar, okay, that's what was missing.
The ice bar. I will refer that to you, committee. The next item comes from Dave Wigfield, he is the chairman of the Civil Service Commission. It is with much regret that due to personal reasons, I need to step down from my position on the Civil Service Commission effective immediately. Is there a motion to accept Mr. Wigfield's resignation? Motion by Mr. Barrett, is there a second? Second by Dr. Waddell. Discussion. All those in favor? We have seven ayes. I will add this to the Public Safety Agenda, and Mr. Pepe, if you could send him a letter of thank you, as we normally do. The next letter comes from Sean Hauser, is that how you pronounce his last name? Huzar, rather, Huzar. North Third Street. He would like to resign his position on the Amays High Street Commission. He is very passionate about what the commission does, and he's finding it impossible to help out as much as he would like. He's a seasonal work schedule, so we need a motion to accept his resignation as well. Oh, it does expire. No need to. If we could just send him a letter of thank you, then? And we will add this to the General Administration Committee's agenda. Dr. Waddell? You're gonna have an opening at this point. Yes. The next item comes from Terry Surong-McMenamin, she is asking to be reappointed to the Mass Arts Commission. I will refer that to you, Dr. Waddell. Along with Bob Bamer's request to be reappointed to the Arts Commission. Along with Angelo Fadeli's request to be reappointed to the Arts Commission. His term expires in February, I believe it indicates.
Okay.
The next letter comes from Dale Washburn, as per our conversation in your office, it's addressed to Mr. Pepe. As per our conversation in your office last week concerning the $6 compost field to be added to the 2013 resident refuse bill, I have three unit residential apartment building located at 1258 Pennsylvania Avenue in Emass, which is under occupied, once again, I feel it's unfair to pay three compost fees for one property. The refuse bill is not in question because all three units do in fact contribute to garbage collection. However, as the property owner, I am the only one who does property maintenance and therefore would have to use, would have the use of the compost center, tenants are not allowed to maintain the property. I am asking that council look into the exceptions of multiple-use properties, in that there should only be one charge per property, per unit. Thank you for your consideration, and I look forward to your response. Originally, this request, actually, the fee came out of the Health and Sanitation Conservation Committee, Mr. Schubsta. But I'm gonna refer it to Budget and Finance, Mr. Holtsafer.
Thank you, Madam President.
Next letter comes from Todd Launchlater, he is asking to be reappointed to the Building Board of Appeals for another three-year term. I will refer this to the General Administration Committee, Dr. Waddell. The next item for communication comes from Kate Hefflin, she's the Brownie, Brownie Troop 685. They're interested in doing a project that relates to beautifying the borough with the goal of making residents to get out and be more active as a result. I think this project would best fit with the park. And as you are the, oh, it's addressed to Mr. Barrett, I didn't even see that, okay, it's addressed to you, Mr. Barrett. As you are in charge of the Parks and Recreation Committee. She's asking that you talk to her about this, so I will refer this to your committee of Parks and Rec-
I'm very scheduled to come in on the, our next one.
The unit meeting? Very good. The next letter comes from Jessica Morrow of Jefferson Street, it's a letter of resignation from the Environmental Advisory Council. She is resigning as of January 1st, 2013. Mr. Pepe, do we have any idea when her term expires? Not until March of 2013, okay, so we do need a motion to accept her resignation. Motion by Dr. Waddell, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtsafer, discussion. All those in favor? We have seven ayes. We could send her a letter of thank you, and I will refer the opening to the Health Sanitation Conservation Committee, Mr. Schubsta. On my desk this evening, there is a letter from Zayn Munson. He is requesting to be reappointed to the Public Library Board of Trustees for a second three-year term. I will refer this to the General Administration Committee, Dr. Waddell. Also on my desk is a letter, is actually Board of Commission's information sheet from Kathy Haney. She is interested in serving on the Civil Service Commission. So I will refer that to the Public Safety Committee. Does any member of council have an item for communication to bring forward? Mr. Pepe, do you have anything further? Mr. Mayor?
No.
You have nothing, okay. Which brings us to the engineer's report, we have no engineer this evening. Solicitor's report, Attorney Demick?
Madam President, just briefly, as per Public Safety's request, the next morning, we prepared the amendments and changes to the, we'll call it the truck parking ordinance, and it is now at least in a, in a sustainable and justifiable position, if that is the way you wish to proceed. That's all I have.
Thank you. Which brings us to unfinished business, part one. Letters O through R will be handled under Committee Reports, which is the tractor trailer ordinance, and the ordinance is dealing with the water rates and the budget. So we'll hold off on those until we get to the actual committee reports. New business, there's nothing listed on the agenda, new business. Unfinished business, part two, we have nothing on the agenda this evening. Items not on the agenda, subject to Rule 9. Any member of council have an item they think we should bring forward? Hearing none? Mr. Mayor, mayor's report?
I just wanna say thank you to all you firemen for being here tonight. Expressing your opinions, and I always tell people, don't just tell me on the street or by a phone call, come in and talk to your council. And I thank you for being here, and I assure myself, I'm in here quite a few years, and I thank you for your work, your dedication to the borough of Amays. And I wish you all a nice Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item on the agenda is the Committee Reports. At this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Hobson if he would give his committee report.
I'd like to report that today, at the Amays High School, students wore green and white to respect the children and adults that died in the Sandy Hook Elementary School this past Friday.
Thank you very much. At this time, I need to call for an executive session to discuss legal matter and contract negotiations. So we will be going into executive session. We're in recess at 9:00 p.m. Mr. Hobson, you are free to go if you would like.
Do we need to bring anything?
Hello, my name's John Donches.